So guys, we are going to finish up tonight the overview training. So I thought that's kind of fitting because we've been working on it for three months and this will kind of round out my last night and then your overview. Then we're going to pass it on to George. I've already set him up with a training session in the queue. So he'll provide the same quality. No, whip him into shape.
Same content, not quality, but the content will be there.
No, he'll be good, he'll be good. So we're gonna go, we're gonna start where we picked off last, left off last time. But as we move to these slides, if there's any questions about any of the work that we previously talked about, just stop me and let me know and we can go back to it. So we talked about what is zoning and what is the comprehensive plan? The components of a comprehensive plan and your zoning code? What gives zoning boards the authority to make decisions on variances and interpretations? We talked about the overall role of the zoning board and what functions you're required to perform? What it takes for an individual to appear before the zoning board of appeals? Potential applications? What you have to look at when you're doing an interpretation of the zoning code? We talked about the area variance test. Now, just real quick, which one is not a factor in the area variance test? Whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties? Whether the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance? Whether the requested variance is substantial? The alleged hardship relating to the property is unique? And whether the variance would have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? Remember, this is area variance test, which is not a factor. We got it. It is the uniqueness. Uniqueness is a factor for the use variance, but not a factor for area variance. I should have given the candies out as we went.
No, that's how I train my dog.
I was afraid you were gonna take it back.
No, no, those are yours.
Reverse, yeah, if you get them wrong, you have to give one back.
No, we've talked about this one every time, but just to show off your smarts. Which factor is missing? Five-factor area variance test, we know uniqueness is not a factor, but which one's missing?
Our favorite one.
Self-created, there we go. Alright, so then we ran through the variances, the area variance test. Then we talked about the use variance. So for a use variance test, how many parts of the four-part test do you have to pass? Is it all four? A majority? It's not passing, it's balancing? It's a number established by the municipality?
Three.
We're showing off here.
Oh, sorry.
Use variance, remember, use variance, use variance test.
Oh, use.
Use. Elaine blew it out of the water right away, she didn't have to glance at the slide. It is all four. Remember, area variance is the balancing test. Use variance is a mandatory four-part test. You have to meet all four standards. So we talked about that. We talked about use variance tests focusing on your return on investment and getting, you have, having to demonstrate with dollars and cents proof. And we talked a little bit about what dollars and cents proof means. I won't go back through that. We talked about illustrations of financial evidence. We talked about that uniqueness. Well, uniqueness is not a factor for the area variance test, it is a factor for the use variance test. We talked about unique circumstances and some examples. And this is where we left off. So we are in the middle of going through the use variance tests. We talked about dollars and cents proofs and financial hardship. We went on to uniqueness. Now we're at character of the neighborhood. So remember that you have to consider the character of the neighborhood when you're looking at use variance. And what are some factors that would illustrate character of the neighborhood? Well, you're gonna look at your observations of the neighborhood when you guys do your drive-bys. That's why it's so important both for area variances and use variances. You want to consider the expected effect of a proposal on the neighborhood. Is it going to change parking patterns, noise levels, lighting, traffic? So you want to consider whether the use requested would be compatible with the surrounding uses. So for example, is it going to create any safety hazards? Does it involve storage of toxic chemicals or blockage of roads during service deliveries? We don't really get anything to that caliber, but a lot of times it's, will this second-story addition block the neighbor's lighting affecting the neighboring garden? That's been one that we had to deal with not so, not so long ago.
But that wasn't a use variance?
No, that was area variance. But the evaluation for that standard at the area variance level and the use variance level is the same. That factor carries over in both tests. In area variance, it's just part of the overall balance. For use variance, it is mandatory, that it will not have an impact on the community character. So diving into self-created, again, this is another one that's going to be part of the area variance and the use variance test. So with respect to use variances, an applicant for a use variance must prove that the hardship the property suffers was not created by the owner. A common hardship that is claimed is that the applicant did not know that what it was doing on the property was not allowed by zoning. However, we talk about this pretty frequently, that it's, that's no excuse to say you didn't know. Ignorance of the law is never an excuse that would apply in any situation when you're talking about area variances and use variances. Property owners are bound by zoning restrictions, even if they're not aware of those zoning restrictions. You have a responsibility to go and look at your municipal zoning code. You can talk to the building inspector. You need to figure out what you're allowed to do on the property. So an applicant who buys a property is presumed to know whether his or her intended use of that property is allowed by the zoning regulations. If it's not allowed, the applicant is essentially creating his or her own hardship when the property is acquired. The ZBA must deny that applicants requested relief in that case, when it comes to a use variance request. The potential purchaser of the property, acting as a contract vendee, for example, would be wise to apply for a variance before the property changes hands. That way, if you don't get your variance, you're not out of luck. Sometimes hardship is created by an action of the property owner after they purchase the property, which might not be a self-created hardship. For example, a couple purchases residential property with a large room above the detached garage, spends large sums of money converting the room into a dance studio, and finds out they cannot operate legally when the zoning enforcement officer finds out about the studio and issues them a citation. If they apply for a use variance, they cannot use the cost of renovation in their hardship argument because the cost would be self-created. So they'd be out of luck. That is, there's no, no way around it. One of the examples that comes up about what is unacceptable, what is not self-created is an example where they purchased the property and they wanted to build, I'm forgetting what it was, but some commercial use, and they realized that the soil wasn't going to allow them to build what they had proposed. And there actually wasn't anything else they could do on the property because of the soil. So they had to request a use variance to allow something else. And I should say, they weren't allowed to use the property in any way permitted by the code because of, because of the soil. And it was in some sort of industrial, commercial district and they had to then build residential. And they said that was not self-created. Now George, later on in the year, I've already advised him that this is a hot topic for this board and that he should pay attention to any case law that's coming out about self-created hardships to create a better idea of what is self-created and what's not self-created. The courts don't really like to talk about it, they try not to evaluate self-created, but George will find something good.
It's almost like they should change the law.
Yeah. That would be helpful, exactly. It's like, why bother even applying for a use variance? Self-created is such a, it's an obstacle all the time. So moving on, general municipal law section 239M requires zoning board of appeals to refer applications to... Oh, sorry, this is a multiple choice question. Phew, I'm off my game. Okay, general municipal law section 239M requires zoning board of appeals to refer applications to which of these entities?
What is that law?
Well, it's a good question because knowing what that law is, is the answer. This one is the county or regional planning agency. That's what 239M requires you to do. So it's intended to bring inter-community and county-wide planning and zoning considerations to the attention of neighboring municipalities. It requires local boards to refer certain types of land use actions to the county planning agency if the subject properties of the applications are within 500 feet of certain areas. A written agreement between the municipal board and the county planning agency can list types of applications that do not have to be referred to the county. So we are actually in an exempt community. So this form that you see on your screen, which is really tiny, is what actually gets referred. So Amanda looks up whether the, whether the application is located within 500 feet of a state road, county road, state property, county property, municipal boundary, or a farm operation. Those are the triggers, the 500 feet triggers. Now, sometimes you're like, how do we know? Dutchess County is great and they have a website where you type in the address and it's color-coded. And based on the color codes, you know whether or not it has to get referred and that gets taken care of by Amanda and the building department. So we don't even have to deal with it or see it, but it's this form that goes.
So they, they could return that or return comments to us?
Exactly. So once this goes out, you have 30 days. You have to wait 30 days before you can make a decision. If the 30 days passes and you didn't receive anything back from the county, you're free to move forward. But the county's pretty good, they'll get this form back and usually it's a matter of local concern. But sometimes it's local concern with comments, sometimes it's a denial. If it's denial, if it's a denial, then you have to do, it has to be approved by a supermajority and you have to go back to the county with your override resolution.
Interesting.
Within seven days.
Yeah. So we don't really deal with that. If any of the issues we're dealing with go to the county, it's usually a matter of local concern. And again, that gets handled at Amanda's, by Amanda. So, thanks Amanda. But the planning board, this really go, if you ever leave the zoning board and go to the planning board, this issue and making sure that this form is properly referred and making sure you're getting the county comments back is more of an issue for the zoning board. In fact, 239 review is not required for area variances concerning residential properties, which is why we really never talk about it. But I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware. And also, if you ever leave and go to the planning board, now you like know what the GML... And it's not, usually you just say like, "GML referral" and that's what this is referring to. So, so there's another section under general municipal law, section 239-N, which requires that notice of special use permit applications and application for use variances for properties within 500 feet of a municipal boundary are sent by regular mail or electronic mail to the clerk of the adjacent municipality at least 10 days before the public hearing. Again, we don't get many use variances and so you have to have two factors for it to be triggered for this group. It would have to be use variance and located within 500 feet of a municipal boundary. Now, conditions of approval. This is something we deal with occasionally, where we talk about whether or not a condition is appropriate to add on to the resolution. Statutes empower the zoning board when granting a use or area variance to impose reasonable conditions and restrictions directly related to and incidental to the proposed use of the property. Conditions are meant to mitigate the impacts of the approved project on both the neighborhood and the integrity of the zoning law. You can't just add a condition that's not connected with the, with the project, right? It has to, the purpose has to be to mitigate some sort of impact you anticipate. And it has to pertain to the property and not to the user. So some acceptable conditions might be focused on traffic control, lighting, landscaping, requiring fencing. These are some very common conditions that we'll see. But some improper conditions would be dedication of off-site land. It would be improper to condition a variance on the dedication of land, not part of the application. It's also not a proper for, to condition a variance on the removal of a non-conforming operation on a different parcel. You have to focus on the property that's in front of you. You cannot make any conditions regulating the detail of the business. An extreme example of this is limiting the variance to the current operator or owner of the business. There was a case from the Supreme Court in 1988 where the court, I'm sorry, not the Supreme Court, the Court of Appeals, where the Court of Appeals struck down a condition placed on the grant of a use variance for a real estate office that restricted the variance to use only by the then-current owner. Again, these variances run with the land, you have to keep that in mind when you're approving it. You can't say, "Well, it's okay for this property because, well, this structure's going to be used by their, you know, relative or their mother-in-law and..." But after that, no more, like it has to be taken down. It doesn't work like that. So you're granting a variance knowing it's going to go on forever and ever. Are there any other conditions to mitigate what your concerns are? Hours of operation. Another improper condition would be one that limited the hours of operation of a business on the property. Limiting the hours of operation through zoning is tantamount to regulating the details of the business. It's like the same thing. This could instead be addressed through enactment of a local law regulating similar businesses.
I feel like you got in the weeds in that with the flower shop then, if I remember. We were like talking about hours of operation, maybe we were talking about that and you said, "No."
Yeah. That's probably, again, you know, and there's some that teeter on the line of, is it appropriate? Is it not appropriate? And you have to really focus on, well, what is your concern? What are you trying to mitigate by imposing that condition? Now, if you impose a condition and the current property owner is fine with it and they say, "Okay", well, their options are to either in the future... Well, they can't argue in the future because again, you have to, your Article 78s have very short statute limitations, right? That 30 days to challenge that the condition was inappropriate. So if they don't challenge, in the future, what they could do is come back to this board and seek an amendment to the resolution to remove the condition. So it can be reevaluated in the future. I've also had cases where in other municipalities where the board years ago put a condition that was, that said that the accessory dwelling unit could only be used by family members. So now the property is being sold, you know, 20 years later and they're, they said, you know, "This, this condition's not legal. What can we do?" And so, you know, we prepared, we evaluated the situation and wrote a memo to the zoning board saying, "This condition has to be dropped." Without them seeking an amendment to the resolution because the condition was illegal based on case law. So I guess that's another way to get it removed is talk to the attorney and argue it shouldn't be there in the first place. So something we have had, so any questions on conditions? So something we've talked a little bit about, but not too much. We've had, had separate trainings on this, this is just gonna give you a little taste of the State Environmental Quality Review Act. So zoning board of appeals, mostly the applications that you're dealing with are area variances for side yards, real yards, or area variances pertaining to single-family or two-family homes. Those are all designated type 2 actions, which is why we don't really go into SEACER. Type 2 actions do not require any environmental review. If a variance request is not on the type 2 list, because SEACER has a type, just a list of type 2 actions, the SEACER process must continue. The lead agency, or the agency that's going to take responsibility for the environmental review, must either issue a negative declaration, which finds that the project will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact, or they issue a positive declaration, which finds that the project may have one or more significant adverse effects on the environment. If an agency issues a positive declaration, an environmental impact statement must be prepared prior to the zoning board's ruling on the application. Now, once you issue that POSDEC, there are many requirements. It starts with a scoping period, which creates a outline of what's going to be in the environmental impact statement. Then they do a draft environmental impact statement, there's a public hearing, then there is the final environmental impact statement and a finding statement. So that process can go on for a year or more. I just finished one that went on for two and a half years. Very exhausting. And they, they produce really big, thick binders of environmental impact statements. So not something that this, that this board has ever seen, I think. I don't think we've ever seen an environmental impact statement. Jordan, you've been here longer than I have.
Uh, no.
No. And most of the time, the planning board, they might do a thorough environment, you know, require a bigger environmental assessment form or ask for specific studies. But I don't know if the planning board has gone into an environmental impact statement either.
Didn't they have that with Prophecy?
What?
Didn't they do that with Prophecy? Prophecy Theater?
I don't think, I don't think they have issued...
They didn't issue anything yet on that.
Yeah.
They're still letting the applicant try to mitigate the issues to possibly get to a negative declaration.
Got it.
They, they have that, but apparently it sounds like it's been in front of the board for like 18 months now.
Yeah.
18 months and they haven't even issued the NEGDEC or the POSDEC.
Yeah.
And when you do the positive declaration, it's not going to be, it's going to be specifically focused on where do you think there might be potential environmental impacts? Is it focused on noise? Like for the Prophecy Theater, maybe it's just noise and traffic.
Yep.
You know, it's not gonna be about, it doesn't always have to include like wetlands and tree removal. It depends on the project and what are your environmental concerns. So I guess there is potential that it could go to environmental impact statement. Only time will tell. So agencies with land use review authority, including zoning board of appeals, must consider SEACER reviewing some appeals and applications. This includes, like I said, the planning board especially and the city council. Their actions are also subject to SEACER review. The purpose is to consider environmental implications of proposed projects before making decisions and to properly evaluate where the areas of concern are and what are some potential mitigation possibilities. Again, we talked, I just mentioned previously about how interpretations in all area variances involving one, two, and three family residences are type 2 actions. Also, area variance applications seeking relief from setback and lot line requirements are also type 2. So type 2 actions are presumed to have no adverse environmental impacts and therefore are not subject to review. When dealing with variances for commercial properties, that's where this board would probably have to step up and do some sort of review an environmental assessment form and make a decision on a POSDEC or a NEGDEC. But we haven't had one of those in quite some time. Every application always has an environmental assessment form, but again, it, that is only part of SEACER if it's not a type 2 action. It's just kind of our, part of our standard application. Any questions on SEACER? So here's a quick, just kind of chart. It shows you how initially, when you look at it, you're like, "Oh, SEACER's complicated." But when you lay it out and you really look at it, it, it's very procedural. And as long as you're following the right steps and the right timeframes, it's really governed by statute and you just have to make sure you're following along and doing it the right way. Our office is, is very trained in SEACER, in the SEACER process, so you're in good hands. So aggrieved applicants that are unhappy with a zoning board decision may request a hearing with the zoning board. They can appeal the decision to the town board or the city council, appeal the decision to the state supreme court, or they could potentially request a rehearing or appeal the decision to court. There's lots of, lots of options. But I just want to dive into judicial review of land use decisions.
I thought you were quizzing us on that one.
I moved past it.
Is it three or four?
Three, right?
I think it's three.
Um, it's actually... It's actually four. Yeah, but you can only request a rehearing upon a unanimous vote.
This is 78, Article 78.
Article 78.
Yeah, that's going to the Supreme Court.
So is that what three is?
Even if they also can appeal to us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it can be done under both circumstances. But like Drew said, has to be unanimous decision of the zoning board to say, "We're gonna rehear this."
Right.
The more common thing is probably the Article 78 and go straight to the Supreme Court.
Is the applicant the only person who can do an Article 78?
No. Anyone aggrieved can do an Article 78. You'll have to prove standing, which I think we did a training session on, on standing and what gets you there. You have to have, you have to show that you don't, you have, you're aggrieved in a way that's not, that not everyone in the community is, that you have some sort of specific impact. Either you're like a direct neighbor or, you know, your drinking water is going to be affected directly. So something more specific than just, you know, "Oh, I'm gonna have to sit in traffic on my way to work," you know. So anybody can appeal, but you'll have to prove standing. So judicial review of land use decisions. So courts defer to local land use decisions, particularly those of local legislatures declaring that those decisions are given a presumption of constitutionality and correctness. The effect of this is to place a heavy burden of proof on those who challenge such decisions to show that they are unreasonable. The courts will not approve a conclusion or decision for which no evidence appears on the record. The court can consider whether the decisions are arbitrary and capricious or not supported by substantial evidence. These words have special legal meaning. So arbitrary and capricious means the decision is not reasonably related to the facts of the case. Substantial evidence is evidence that a reasonable person would accept as enough to support the agency's decision. When reviewing a decision, the courts will limit their review to ascertain whether the determination has a rational basis and is supported by substantial evidence. A zoning board of appeals may not premise a decision on community opposition. We've talked about this plenty of times. A, you have to base it on a factual statement. A mere general statement is not going to support your ultimate finding. So if someone comes in here and says, "Stop this project, this project is bad for the community." I don't care if there's 100 people saying it's bad for the community. That is general community opposition. There is nothing factual. But if they say, you know, "I, there's already, you know, an absurd amount of traffic. I drive to work every day and I, I see it and it takes me 20 minutes to get down the street." Well, now we're starting to build up on, on facts of what's really going on. Or with water, you know, "I'm a next-door neighbor, there is a major water issue. You should not allow them to have additional impervious coverage, we're concerned about the water impacts." So now we're, again, focusing on the facts, that's what's key. The Court of Appeals has clearly held that generalized community opposition in the absence of substantial evidence cannot constitute support for the denial of an application. A determination will not be considered to be rational and will be invalidated if it is solely based on subjective considerations such as general community opposition or if it lacks objective factual basis. So the courts have just repeated that standard over and over. There must be evidence in the record to support the board's decision. And the decision itself must be supported by findings that constitute substantial evidence. And the decision itself must be supported by findings that constitute substantial evidence. Findings of fact and/or testimony must be placed on the record, which adequately to support the decision. It is no exaggeration to say that everything a board of appeals decides is a potential lawsuit. That is why we go in-depth with our discussions about the five factors, you know, it's not just yes or no, it's why, we always add the why. And oftentimes, we're not getting a lot of commenters at these boards, but it's still important to build a record and making, making sure that, you know, this board's decision is supported by facts and evidence in the record. And, you know, at the end of the day, it comes down to videos and minutes and the resolution. So that's why we have these discussions, and you guys are doing a great job with, with going through those factors, so keep it up. And I think that is it. So this PowerPoint was long, but it gives you a, a kind of a taste of all the subjects. Now, through, I gave George the list that we talked about in January, about what were some of the trainings you hope to see later on in the year, he has that list, um, you know, and it'll pull from bits and pieces of this PowerPoint as well, so he'll take care of you from here.
Thank you, Drew.
You're very welcome, guys. It's been my biggest pleasure to work with you all.
It's our pleasure.